Good afternoon, welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Special Meeting of Council held June the 7th, 2016. We had the approval of the agenda. It was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie that council approves the agenda for its special meeting of June the 7th, 2016 as presented. All in favor? Thank you. Petitions and delegations. Mark, you had to come and speak to the... Just before we start, Mark, I'm sorry, is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Thank you.
So, the special meeting of councils to look at zoning application number 16. This was brought up several, a few years ago, 2014, the application from Clear Futures Development to rezone lands located at 26 Hudson Bay from residential low medium to R2 to residential high density R4 to convert the existing five-unit apartment to an eight-unit apartment building. A special meeting was held at council in August 2014 to discuss this application. The Planning Advisory Committee had met also and it recommended approval. The, our planner, because there's multiple inconsistencies with provincial policy statement at that point, had to declare that she would not recommend this change, but the Planning Advisory Committee has the authority to make these calls. So, that was brought to council and council had agreed to rezone. Because of the length of time, there was some issues with being able to sell the property at 38 Hudson Bay for the parking due to town policy on selling to those in arrears. Now, that has taken a while to figure out, but it's been dealt with so we can, and they still want to proceed with this zoning change. So, at this point, we're at the council to look at the going forward with the zoning amendment to rezone it to eight units, high-density R4 at 26 Hudson Bay, using 38 Hudson Bay for satisfying the parking conditions.
Councillor Roman.
I just have a question. With regards to the building, it appears that the work on the building sort of stopped midstream, I would imagine, until this gets resolved. Now, is it his intention, if he's successful here, to, you know, to complete the exterior work on the building?
Yeah, that's his intention at this point. We could not issue the building permit for eight units because it wasn't zoned properly, so it was stop work on his part from us, so that now that this is completed, it's his intent to proceed with the eight apartments.
Okay. And, well, I'm of the opinion that the Planning Advisory Committee is good with it, and from your report, I gather that there's no objections in the neighborhood today?
It was circulated and recirculated. We didn't receive anything other than an email or a phone call this morning to Jenna from, with no name, from a tenant at 24 Hudson Bay, just asking questions about it because she hadn't heard about it. Her concerns were the parking, but if the 38 Hudson Bay would have to be developed for it, and was concerned about the type of people renting on the property, but nothing significant about the rezoning.
Okay. Well, I'd certainly be in favor then. Do you want to head with this?
Thank you. Councillor Morgan.
Mark, in our package, we've got a plan here that shows 26 Hudson Bay now. It appears that there's long parking spots on site now. Is that going to be in addition to 38 Hudson Bay, or is this like an old plan that's not going to be used? Or just not quite? What purpose is drawing this?
That was their first application to satisfy the parking there, but it didn't meet the criteria, so the 38 Hudson Bay would be necessary to have the amount of parking spaces for that many units.
You know, I spoke about it last time, and normally in a residential neighborhood like this, I'd be a little hesitant to, you know, to go along with a scenario like this because I think that parking is a little bit further away than what's going to be used. But the fact that none of the neighbors have said anything, you know, I'm prepared to accept this recommendation.
Councillor Kylie.
Yeah, Mark, just to clarify, 38 Hudson Bay is going to be where the parking is?
Correct.
So, that's closer to LaBelle, going up that way?
I believe so, yes.
Is there a building on that lot now, or is it an empty lot?
As far as I know, it's a vacant lot at 38.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, actually it's...
I agree with councillor Roman's comments. I'm prepared to support this change.
Okay, thank you, councillor Kylie. Any other comments? Is there any comments from the audience concerning this subject? Yes, please state your name, your address, and what you'd like to talk about.
My name is Tracy Russell, I live at 28 Hudson Bay. I'm the lucky neighbor in this place. As far as the parking goes, that's my only problem. This empty lot that they proposed, there is a garage existing on the building. It used to be an apartment building that burned down. The back of the lot is, I would say, gets from the laneway to the front, 10, maybe 12 feet difference in elevation. They may have quite the challenge to make this a level lot for parking. I don't know how they're going to do this. And I really, it's a half a block away essentially. And I do just see it now, but like I said, I live right next door, and you know, I think most people assume or take for granted that the space in front of your home is essentially goes with the lot that you have. It's not. It's public property, of course. It's there for everyone to use. But generally, I think most of us assume that right directly in front of your own home, you should maybe park there once in a while, you know? With this proposed parking space literally half a block away, how much are they going to get used? I keep in front of my house, the last couple of years, I've been plowing in front of my house, and it cost me still over $300 to have the snow removed every winter. How much am I going to be plowing the space for someone else to use? That's going to become a headache. This building has been a headache. They dug up my driveway twice now. The first time, they left it exposed until the middle, near the end of November morning. And like I said, it's been an ongoing pain. As far as the parking goes, I personally don't think this is going to work. Thank you for your call.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Yes, please stand up and state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Emma Kelly with, sorry, you're a little closer, so I move here. My name's Emma Kelly with Clear Future Developments. I apologize for being late. I ran here as quickly as I could. Tracy and I know each other because of the construction and that. And again, my apologies, we've had, I apologize about how many times for the issues that we've had and all that, and I think we're on pretty good terms in that. But with different contractors and digging up driveways and not getting done in time and that, and again, my apologies to you for that. The parking at the other lot is going to get used. There is a garage that's there that's going to be taken down. We have no intention of keeping that garage because of what Tracy's saying about the slope in the front of it. That's absolutely correct. It is quite a steep slope of 10 or 12 feet at the front of it. We don't intend to use any of that for parking. We intend to remove and tear down the garage at the back and then have the whole, essentially the whole back of the lot to be used for the parking. The building is going to be eight one-bedroom apartments, and with those one-bedroom apartments, that's going to be the, the other lot over there is going to be the overflow parking, I guess, to comply with the bylaws that say you need two parking spots per lot. So, most one-bedroom apartments would only have one, some might have two cars. But in the most case, they'll just have one car. But if they have visitors over, if they have a boat and things like that, they can park them over at the other lot. So, the other lot's going to be used more as a backup or an overflow lot. There's still a big room for eight cars on the main lot with the building as well. Can I ask you a question?
Okay, councillor Kylie.
Yes, further to this gentleman's comments, is this parking lot going to be backfilled in and, or they're going to have to go down that hill?
The laneway and their main access, I would imagine, would be through the laneway in the back because that'd be the easiest in and out for everything. Will the front get backfilled? There is a slope on it right now. I don't think it's, it may need to be packed down, but I think it's, just visually looking at it, I don't know any exact dimensions, but just visually looking at it, it seems to be all right to drive up and down. It may get a little slippery in the winter. We'll have to, you know, take care of salt and sand and things like that. But with the garage removed at the back, I don't think it's going to be an issue at all.
I'm sorry, there's just, I'll have to ask you to sit just for a second, but let this gentleman, it's just that we can't go back and forth between each other. But my question, Mr. Kelly, is what the timeframe is to tear down this building that's on there?
I mean, it could be done, it's really not going to be a much, a big deal at all to tear this building down, so I mean, if the council wishes to impose by the end of the summer, say August 31st or whatever, we can have it torn down and that's, I mean, I've already got a contractor set up to do it, so.
Councillor Shamir.
Yeah, Emma, so that new apartment's going to be, is it going to be inside the outside? When's the, how long is that thing?
We've had a lot of internal complications with that, with investors and things like that, and it's unfortunately a big, a big pain and a thorn in my side when it comes to the back end of that building. I don't want to say it's going to get done. It probably, the target date right now is summer 2017. Next summer, that building will be occupied and up and running and good to go.
So, to help Tracy, that building will be nicer than this right now?
Yes, yeah, it's the outside, the bottom half looks great. The top half is half done and sightings, you know, flapping away and all that kind of stuff. It's not, the upper half is never finished. And there was some issues there with contractors and things like that, so it's a long story.
Councillor Kylie.
Just to clarify, maybe, Mark, you can answer this. So, they'll become, people, parking will have to come up off of LaBelle in behind, in the laneway in order to get in there for the parking. Is that correct?
Either off of LaBelle or off of, is the other one Prospect? Prospect, yeah.
So, are we, who's responsible for keeping that laneway clear?
That's not a, we just will maintain laneway.
I would anticipate that we would have to plow that because that's the way we do it in a lot of our other buildings already, where that, that don't have a serviced laneway. So, we would, our plow truck would do that up until the point it's needed. I would imagine we'd do it from the Prospect side though, not the LaBelle side. Just there's a lot, there's a lot easier access from the Prospect side, so that would get cleared up as well. And there's also a front access, like you can get to the back laneway from the front of our building as well. There's a lane in between the building, like a driveway that goes through, so I'm not exactly sure what that's going to look like, but it'll, I mean, if we declare the laneway, we'll clear the laneway. We already do in four or five other buildings in town all winters.
I would recommend that be a condition of the, if this goes to approval, that the laneway is cleared by the owner?
Yeah, so currently, it's not a municipal maintained laneway, so we don't have any obligation to clear it. So, that would be up to him with his site plan for his parking. Obviously, in the wintertime, there's parking restrictions on the roads, so they'll have to use the available spots at the property and the overflow. And they'll have to make sure that they have access.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rizik.
I apologize for what you...
Oh, not at all.
You pretty much brought up everything that I was going to say because the laneway is somewhat grown in, and there is fair amount of rock studding out of it. So, like to actually, I find to be using it right now, you wouldn't want too many people driving their cars up and down this laneway. So, again, you've already brought up what I was going to mention. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions? Okay, I have a, I have a resolution here in front of me. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker that council approves the Planning Advisory Committee's recommendation to rezone 26 Hudson Bay Avenue from low to medium-density residential, R2, to high-density residential, R4. All in favor? Okay, it was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie. The council adjourns its special meeting of June the 7th, 2016 to a regular meeting of council. All in favor? Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council held June the 7th, 2016. Before we start our meeting, I'd just like to remind the public that there will be a special meeting next Tuesday, June the 14th. That would be for the reading of the KPMG report. Approval of the agenda, it was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of June the 7th, 2016 as presented. All in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations? Today, we have from the Kirkland Lake Women's Slow Pitch League, Lindsay Guduri and Twyla Harrison. A few young ladies would like to come up and do your presentation, and welcome to council.
So, I guess I'll start by introducing myself. Some of you know me and some of you don't. I'm Lindsay Guduri, and I'm the umpire-in-chief for the Kirkland Lake Women's Slow Pitch League. This is Twyla Harrison. She is our president of the league this year. We're here today to petition council to not necessarily give us a free tournament, but we are having difficulty meeting the new tourism criteria that was set, and knowing that we would have to pay per-game rate for the tournament has caused a lot of issues as far as being able to afford to host a tournament. We have other opportunities to use fields in town that are not owned by the Town of Kirkland Lake, but in our eyes, it's better to use those fields and facilitate the town fields because they're very well-maintained, they're the safest fields we have, and like last year, we used DCJV and had a girl break her ankle because the outfield's on level. So, we're here basically today to petition to you guys to, like I said, not necessarily give us a freebie, but maybe give us some sort of deal for a tournament weekend rate versus paying a per-game rate per field for the whole weekend. So, that's why we're here today.
Okay. Questions? Oh, councillor Shamir.
Thanks, guys, for coming and no slow pitch support for me. Yeah, I think, I thought that we had opened our thing for these tourism things pretty wide open. Bonnie, did you talk to them? There's no room for them to fit in there?
Yeah, but your criteria, do I have to speak or...
I know the criteria inside, sorry.
Yeah, I know you know them, but I thought we tried to open it so make sure that you, like, we don't need eight teams from town, but if you have one or two from out of town, that was pretty liberal.
The sports, the tourism criteria states that your participants have to either be 50% of all participants from out of town, 140 kilometers away or more, or occupy 20 rooms in a hotel, which would be absolutely impossible for us. We have right now 10 teams registered for our tournament, three of which are from out of town, two from Timmins, one from Sudbury, and then seven from here. Even with those three teams coming from out of town, booking 20 hotel rooms when your teams are usually only 12 people is not going to happen, especially with women. We don't care to share beds, so we'll put four people in a room. It doesn't bother us to save on costs, and one of our teams that comes from Timmins camps every year while they're here, so even then, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to meet that criteria, and that's where we're having difficulty. We've advertised in North Bay, Sudbury, Ottawa. I was just recently at a tournament in Belleville. We advertised down there, and it's hard to get people to come to such a remote community because we don't have a lot of amenities around us for them to access. The ones that are coming from out of town are ones that have participated before, and we offer a C and E level, and a lot of the teams from Timmins and Sudbury are D, and the rest of them are A and B. So, that's also where we struggle. Our league is broken up into five divisions, and the divisions we offer here are not as sought after as some of the higher-up ones.
I think Lindsay, you already got a great start. I mean, 10 teams, a lot more than we had in the last few years.
It's the most we've had in the last five years.
Yeah, and the three from out of town is awesome, too. I really thought that would fit in the thing.
We're just missing it. We need at least four more from out of town to meet the 50% of all participants.
Because we had some, Nancy, that were, are you allowed to talk on this?
The thing is, the committee has set the criteria, and staff, that is what we follow. If somebody wants a change in what the criteria is that council has given us to follow, that's why they come to council. If council chooses to make the exceptions to that, that's up to council.
Because I got to talk to council then, okay?
Not to us or the committee?
Because we had a tournament with six teams, and then we had two from out of town or three, and we could say there was three, and they said, okay, they have 10 teams and three from out of town, which is awesome. I mean, that creates a lot of business in town. Anyway, I'm agreeing to wait.
It'd be interesting to know what the registration fees are for the tournament?
They are $300 per team.
So, $2,000.
Yes.
So, what are you guys looking for? Are you looking for a day fee or...
A day rate would be great.
Or a weekend rate?
A weekend rate would be good, too. The other thing we were going to propose would be to donate 10% of our revenue from the registration fees to the Pulling Together campaign as sort of a thank you, because I know that that's a big campaign going in town right now, and that town is very involved with it. So, that was another thing that we wanted to bring to the table. So, either some kind of day rate that would make it much less than $55 a game after taxes, or this is also something that we would propose.
Councillor Kylie.
This is just for one tournament this year?
Correct. It's July 8th to 10th.
And we're not talking every year? This is a one-time request?
Correct.
Okay.
We're looking to expand this tournament. This year, we have 10 teams, which is great. There is a possibility of more because our registrations don't close until the end of this month. However, over the next five years, we're hoping to really expand to make it what it used to be. When I first started Slow Pitch with Kirkland Lake 14 years ago, we had 10, 12, 14, 16 teams some years participating in these tournaments, and we always held them at Civic. Since then, Slow Pitch has really kind of petered out a little bit in the north, and a lot of towns are going from having a men's and women's division to having mixed leagues. So, that's where we're kind of losing the teams because they're going from being separated to together. For Inglehart, for example, used to have men's and women's, and now they're only mixed. Lisker has a mixed league and a men's league, but no ladies league, so we struggle with that as well.
As the umpire-in-chief, I'm just wondering, so what would the umpires get paid per game?
They get paid $20 per game, and it's as per SPN rules. We are an SPN sanctioned league here, as well as an SPN sanctioned tournament, so in our SPN rule books, they are paid $20 per game, and that's the same all across Ontario.
Councillor Barker.
Do you have any sponsors for the tournaments or anything like that coming in?
Currently, we have a few sponsors. They're not huge. Most of them are, we have Siemens donating water bottles and baseball caps. Alocart is donating $150 service, so like a gift card. We have Mamas donating $100 gift card. So, these are more prizes for the teams that are participating, but no cash donations.
And no sponsorship of the tournament, saying that it's a Labatt's War, whatever kind of tournament?
No.
The problem is, it costs money to run the field, and that's the thing, and if it's not recouped from the tournament, it's recouped from tax dollars. We all know taxes are a big issue.
Yes.
So, it is a fine line to try to balance that, and that's where I try to come from is, I love sports, we need to get more people active.
Yeah.
I'm with 100% on there, but there's, it's a fine line between supplying funding for such a small group and then putting it on the back to the taxpayers. That's where sponsorship, I know the Slow Pitchers used to get sponsorships from different leagues.
Trust me, we're trying. I think I've sent out over 25 sponsorship letters to not only local businesses, but also corporate.
Gotcha.
So, because it's such a small event, it's really difficult to get those corporate businesses interested. So, like I said, we're struggling. We're doing everything in our power to try and make this a successful tournament and make it easier for us to afford. However, there are things that are holding us back, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councillor Morgan.
Thanks very much for coming today. You've really articulated your position quite well. I'm just wondering, like, and I, you know, I'm finding myself in a bit of an odd spot here, supporting Jean-Guy and the Recreation Committee, and I know that, you know, we've set these benchmarks for what we're trying to achieve, but I'm just wondering, I mean, I don't, you know, you said right off the bat that you weren't looking for a wholesale freebie.
Correct.
And I'm just wondering if there isn't a little bit of room for some sort of a pro-rata, you know, compromise here where, you know, it's not, we don't give you the whole thing like, you know, you're expecting, but because there is, you know, a significant amount of outside participation, you know, maybe there's some wiggle room for some kind of a discount. I don't know what it should be, and I really, you know, I apologize to Bonnie because I should have, you know, if I had a thought of this ahead of time, I should have bounced it off her, but anyways, I'm just throwing it on the table for a possible compromise because it seems that we're going to end up with some events that just aren't quite there, and...
The problem is, is we're not hockey. We can't, I know that the Dudley Hewitt Cup met the criteria, and the four-on-four tournament met the criteria. That was brought to our attention when we had our meeting with Stella Williams, but hockey teams are a lot bigger. They always have trainers and coaches and everything else, and being the gold miners and being the sole team in Kirkland Lake, all they had to do was bring in one more team to meet that criteria. So, for us, being the seven teams that we are, we have to bring in another seven from out of town, which again is difficult because hockey is not, sorry, baseball is not as big as hockey, or Slow Pitch is not as big as hockey, so. It used to be, of course, but I guess things just die after a while. So, we're trying to bring back the big tournaments that we used to have. We're really trying.
Councillor Kylie.
I agree with councillor Morgan. I think a compromise is in order here. Not sure the exact amount, but some kind of a discount. The fact that we're redoing Civic Park with a big new ball field and new facilities, and I think your tournament, I compliment you on the fact that you're bringing people into town, and I think it's a good kickstart. I think it's a good kickstart to get these tournaments coming back here again because it's, it's been a little while since we've had that many. So, I would support some compromise as well, as Counselor Morgan had mentioned.
Counselor Roman.
I have to say, I'm not that familiar with, with ball tournaments, and ju- just to get my head around it, how many games are there, say, in your tournament?
We're looking between twenty to twenty-four. That's our rough number of games for the weekend.
Okay, and can I ask what other expenses you guys have, like, and there's the cost for the fields and the cost for the?
The umpires. We also have prize. We have our prize cost because we're not gonna expect everyone to come to this tournament and not have something in return for winning it. The top placing teams get their registration fee back plus SPN swag, so they'll get t-shirts or hats, water bottles, things like that. And the second place team gets, I believe, a hundred and fifty, so they get half of their, their registration fee back along with SPN swag as well.
So, do you guys run a profit?
No. Last year, I think we broke even, maybe had two hundred dollars left over for the weekend.
Left over, so profit still?
Yeah, a very small profit, yes.
Counselor Barker.
Just going back to the Slow Pitch League, so when you put on the, yes.
SPN.
Yeah, okay, thank you. SPN.
You're welcome.
Tournament. Do they throw any dollars your way, or do you have, do you have to pay them for using their?
We register our teams with them, and I believe it's a hundred and seven.
We get a hundred and fifty dollars is here for our insurance, just for this tournament.
What was the, what was the team rate?
Hundred and seven.
And of that hundred and seven, they put a portion toward SPN. So we, we have like, I wouldn't say an account, but a credit with them.
Right.
So we can get X amount of dollars. I think this year, we have two hundred and eighty-four dollars to purchase SPN products.
But they don't help out in?
Absolutely not.
Really? Okay.
Nope.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is, is there anything that the, that the organizers can do to offset some of the expenses? Because I guess we have to have staff there. It's during the weekend, right? And we have to have staff there to, to do certain things.
Oh, absolutely. Like I said, we're not looking for a freebie.
That your group can do to offset some of the costs of the town, or? I, I guess we have to, like, the fields have to be dragged, I guess because of insurance, of course. And they have to be lined. Okay.
At one point, I think, Bonnie, like, be able to, maybe, we used to charge, I think, the price of the, the cost of the, of the worker, right? So that is easy to do. That would fit, good for them. That would, that would satisfy me, anyway. So I don't know if it's two hundred dollars for the weekend, or two fifty, three hundred dollars.
It depends on the number of hours.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, they wouldn't, they obviously wouldn't be needed twenty-four seven for the whole weekend.
No, no, yeah.
Usually, ga- the fields are dragged every two to three games, depending on the weather. The weather makes a big difference. If the fields are wet, they need to be dragged more often because they, they get bumpy and, and, but if it's a nice weekend, every three games to be dragged and lines are, are suitable because we can't do much more than that, or we end up running behind, and games go longer than they're supposed to, so. Other than that, we just need them to turn the lights on if we have any evening games, which are not expected.
No games expected?
The, the, I think the Friday night, we may have six-thirty games, but nothing that would require lights, as far as I'm concerned. I don't, I don't expect that.
Yes, Bonnie, please.
Thank you. Just a comment because I know it's hard to make a decision on the spot, especially when we don't really know the history. So, just to remind council, the first year we tried sports tourism, we had a very loose criteria. And really, anybody that we thought had some out-of-town interest, we were able to waive fees. And then when Recreation Committee met and looked at the first year, in January, we decided, wow. We, we waived some fees for some events that maybe only two rooms were rented and very few people from out of town. So that's when we set the criteria as it is. But as we can see tonight, it may not be perfect for every group. So, building on, and this is just a suggestion that we could throw around tonight that may be able to help the girls out in a couple of weeks, building on what we set the criteria as, we were, we were looking at, if you don't meet the sports tourism criteria, you pay a hundred percent of the rate. If you do meet the sports tourism criteria, all fees are waived. So talk, a couple of the counselors thought maybe we could find something in the middle. So, the twenty rooms, we might be able to, if you're talking three teams from out of town, the girls are quadrupling up in the rooms, it might be ten teams. So I would suggest if they met the ten-room, sorry, ten-room, ten-room criteria, rather than do a hundred percent reduction, we could do a fifty percent reduction. And that way, we're taking the, we're not, we're still abiding by the bylaw, which sets the rates. And what we're doing is we are looking at manipulating the sports tourism strategy, and we would do it for this summer for ball, and then again, we would evaluate and see where that leaves us after another season has gone by. So it's one way, i- i- it's mathematically then, whether it's ten rooms or eleven rooms, you would just mathematically figure out what the reduction would be based on the per-game rate.
So, Bonnie, so if it's twenty rooms, that's for zero, if they have five rooms, then it's less twenty-five percent?
Twenty-five percent reduction, yeah.
And, and what do you young ladies think about that?
So that would be, we pay forty-nine, five, then it'd be forty-nine, sixty-five plus tax. So we'd be looking at twenty-five dollars a game?
If you had ten rooms booked.
If we had ten rooms booked. We have to take into account the team that camps, too, because they won't book rooms for the hotel. They, they come every single year from Timmins, and they camp every single year out at Culver. I can't do math.
Well, you know, I, I think what we're looking for is just a sort of a general, a general guideline to work as, as you go forward.
Oh, absolutely.
It, it's not to, and you may not even get an answer tonight. It's, it's just to, to come up with some different ideas. And one idea is proportionately the number of rooms. If you have a quarter of the rooms, so if you, if you had five rooms, then you'd get twenty-five percent discount. If we came tonight and said, well, we'll give you twenty-five percent off, don't worry about anything, you'd probably be, be happy.
No, not necessarily. I, I did, I did.
I guess.
I did my own research before coming here because I wanted to make sure that we weren't asking for too much or too little. I went to Fields and Timmins, I went to Fields and Lisker, and I also went to Fields and Inglehart to find out what their rates are. I have that paperwork if you guys are interested at all in seeing it.
I, like, for me, it doesn't really matter what the other communities, it's what we can afford here in Kirkland Lake.
Oh, just because we were told that the rates here were set based on comparison to other communities in our area. So, and that was told to us at our meeting with Stella, that they, that council, once they set their fees, based their rates on, on other cities around us, so.
Perhaps, I, I don't think that's the main thing, but perhaps as a guideline, we use that. It's just hard to compare to other communities because we're Kirkland Lake, and they're Timmins, and they're New Lisker, and, and you already know that you can get the ball fields cheaper if you use Culver.
They're even more expensive than everywhere else, so.
Yeah, so that's why it's not good to compare. And you guys, you could use, is there any fields you can get for free?
ECJV is a, is free. However, we make a donation to the school.
Okay.
So ECJV is absolutely free.
So you could hold your whole tournament there for free if you wanted to? And, and that's an option that you have, isn't it? I mean, that's a better option than paying, isn't it?
It is, but again, it's not the safest field in town, and we want to promote Kirkland Lake. We are the Kirkland Lakes Women's Slow Pitch League, so obviously, we want to try and use the Kirkland Lake facilities that are available to us. And that's, that's one of our big goals, is to promote our town as it is, not use the school fields and use the field fifteen minutes out of town, and we're trying to stay here. And that's our goal, is to stay here.
That's good. Counselor Shamir.
Tony, just, I'm sure Bonnie will say something. I know we said room, but camping was also part of the room because we, we weren't there to promote people to stay, to stay at motels. We wanted people to come in and stay in town and use restaurants, gas bar, hotels, whatever. We never talked about camping, and Bonnie, but we talked about this for hours. I mean, for me, camping is also a room. Actually, they rent, they're sort of renting from out of Kirkland Lake, which is good, because we sort of own Culver, so it is actually better than a motel room.
Any other council comments, or Counselor Morgan?
I can't believe I'm on this side of the argument, but.
Me either. But it's great to see you over, it's good to see you on the other side sometimes.
Yeah, well, you know, stirring a jongie all the time here. I'm just, you know, you, you brought up exactly what was rattling around in my head was, i- is that maybe, you know, the formula that we're using is a little bit skewed towards just rooms.
Hockey.
As opposed, well, not hockey, but, because hockey's, hockey's got its own challenges, but it's about people spending money in town.
Right.
And I think we need to be less specific about where they spend their money. Just, you know, I mean, it's, they're all taxpayers, whether it's a restaurant, or a gas station, or a convenience store, or a grocery store, or, you know, motel, or whatever. So I think, and, and this, this is more comment directed specifically at Jean-Guy and his committee, is that maybe, you know, at some point, there needs to be a rework of the formula to, to accommodate that, because.
Trial and error.
Counselor Barker.
I just asked as we go forward that we are fair to every group that comes to the table and asks. Because I know there's been some in the past that have been denied for certain things, and I'd like to see this shared amongst every group, given the opportunity. So if we do go forward with this alter, alternative option, which I, I would support, that, that it's open to everyone moving forward and offering the opportunity.
One question I have, is there any, there's no gate, right? You don't charge people to come watch the games?
No. Oh, no, 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 no. It's all free, no. The, the only thing we charge is the three hundred dollar entry fee per team. That's it. That's the only revenue, I guess you could say, that we, we get. But it goes right back out the door with the cost of running it and everything else.
So i- if, if you had people that would volunteer to umpire, would, would that make a difference, or?
We're actually not allowed to have volunteer umpires because we are an SPN sanctioned tournament. We have to have SPN sanctioned, uh, carded umpires. So I paid, I pay a hundred and, I believe it's a hundred and nine dollars after taxes to take a course to get myself carded. That's how I become umpire in chief. If I don't have that card, I can't have the title. And all of our umpires that umpire for us, even in regular season, they're paid twenty dollars a game, and they are carded umpires as well, so.
So, what I'm hearing is, I'm hearing there's a willingness to negotiate going forward for this tournament. And, so would that mean that the committee? Because I think what the committee has to know, and what the Slow Pitch have to know, is what is costing us to have these people out working on that day?
I would gladly pay their fees for the day, like, if, if it comes to.
You may be surprised. You may be surprised what it costs.
It will cost more.
It, it's, it, it's not just a matter of, it's, it costs us money, but I'm still hearing that there's, there's room for negotiations going forward, and I'm getting this from all council members. So, can we then go back to the committee and, and take this as a, our discussion tonight as a starting point, Nancy, or, sorry, Bonnie, and Bonnie's on the committee. Jim, you're on the committee? Mrs. Alec and Counselor Shamir, Norm? And look at what it costs and what's fair, and, because I think you're hearing there is a willingness to, to work with you.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And so could we then defer the decision to the committee? And you, Counselor Shamir?
But, yeah, when you guys need to notice. I know earlier better, but.
We need to have time to have insurance in place. How long does that take?
Maybe nine days?
Okay. And your term is in?
July eighth to tenth, yes.
What, what, what month are we, June, somewhere? A month from now. So the next meeting is two weeks. Can we get this ready for next meeting, which is next week?
Well, I don't.
Can we do it next week?
Does it have to come back to council? It doesn't have to come back. It can be done at the committee. It can be done at the committee level. It's because it, there is consensus, and I, I would agree with the counselors that there's sometimes groups that don't fall within, especially groups that don't charge admission, especially groups that, you know, provide some entertainment for the participants and for the spectators that want to go. And for sure, as Counselor Shamir spoke of, Slow Pitch is important to the community. It's been around a long time. There was never a, you know, because there was always twenty teams or twenty-five teams, so. Certainly, a sponsorship would be nice to get some, some sponsor, you know, pay the five hundred dollars. That could go to, towards the, some of the.
We're trying.
Yeah, yeah. So i- is that, is that fine with council? And? Okay, we're just gonna make up a guess. Yeah, of course.
Lindsay, just to, and to add to, I know you guys played in King Kirkland for a long time, and it's, it's good, it's good, but what it doesn't do, it doesn't promote your league because the kids don't see it.
No.
When you play in town, people stop and watch, kids stop and watch, you get involved, and that's how Tewa started, and that's how we all started playing ball and watching with the people.
Right.
It is better for you when you play in town and use our field, and that's what we hopefully will, will happen.
Sometimes their decisions are much, are easier made if they're for children. It's, it's harder when you're adults doing the things, but hey, here's a resolution I have, and it was moved by Counselor Roman and seconded by Counselor Morgan, that council defers the women's Slow Pitch tournament fees to the Recreation Committee for a decision. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is that fine?
That's good, thank you.
Thank you for coming. And thanks for organizing the committee, our, that tournament.
Thank you.
Okay, we have acceptance of the minutes and recommendations. It was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Kylie that council accepts the minutes at the following meetings. The regular meeting of council, held May seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. The meeting to open tax sale sealed tenders, held May twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen. The special meeting of council, held May twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen. And the meeting to open sealed tenders for scrap metal, held June third, two thousand and sixteen. All in favor? Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Nancy, you're going to speak on the tax sale properties?
Yes, this is Jen's report that she did up. This is regarding the old Joel Ross Metals property, which is a brownfield. What she would like to do is write off the taxes back, still keeping it three years in arrears so that we can invest it if we do have a sale for that property, but write off the balance of the taxes. So it brings down our uncollectibles, and also the, the Board of Education portion goes away as well. There is a criteria, though, if the property does sell within seven years, that you do have to go back and give the, the school board the money, but Jen would like to write, write them off up to a three-year point.
Counselor Kylie.
Do you know approximately, Nancy, what the, just a ballpark figure?
Yes, it's fourteen-twenty, so we're, we're, the penalty and interest to be written off is sixty-five thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and twelve cents, of which five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-five cents would be charged back to the Board of Education. So from, from our perspective, just, just under, under sixty thousand, we'd be writing off.
So that's for the Joel Ross property, is that? So I do have, is there any other questions on that? Because I do have a resolution for that. It was moved by Counselor Kylie and seconded. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that council directs the treasurer to not vest tax sale file 14-20. And that $65,116.12 in total tax penalty and interest be written off. $5,250.55 of which is to be charged back to the board of education. And we'll get that money back.
Yes, yes. Well, we'll take it off what we owe them for, for other things. We also have another $145.
Okay, and all in favor of that? Thank you.
Okay. The next one is 145 Government Road West, which is the old DVA. We'd like to declare, declare a surplus. And to, oh, to, just, today we're just writing off the taxes. We'll bring it back for declaring surplus.
Is there any questions on that one? I think we've sort of hammered that one to death previously, and rightfully so, rightfully so.
I can tell you the amounts that we'll be writing off would be a total of 868,447.72, of which $123,628.19 would be charged back to the board of education. So we'll actually be writing off 744,819.53.
Okay, so I have a resolution on that. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker. That council directs the treasurer to write off 868,447.72 in total tax penalty and interest for tax file 15-05, 145 Government Road West. $123,628.19 will be charged back to the board of education. All in favor? Thank you.
The third property is 16 Wood Street that we would like to write the taxes on. This building will likely be demolished. We're just looking, having a look, having Mark's crew look at that right now. We don't think it's feasible to, to keep it for resale. So that would be 1501. The taxes, penalty and interest and cost be written off are $7,508.66, of which $246.26 will be charged back to the board of education.
Okay, I have a resolution here, moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that council directs the treasurer to vest tax sale file 15-01, 16 Wood Street. And that $7,508.66 in total tax penalty and interest be written off. $246.26 of which is to be charged back to the board of education. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Joe, you're going to talk on Latchford Resolution. We're going to fence in Highway 11.
So this was a resolution that we received from the town of Latchford. They're petitioning the government, specifically the ministry of transportation, to build the moose fences, the wildlife fences, along Highway 11 corridor between North Bay to, all the way up through the Timiskaminge district. And this is because of all the collisions that they have. So they're asking us to add our name to the petition that they're sending out.
Councillor Barker.
I sit on a couple of regional boards outside of my council adjutant. One of them's in Sudbury, and there is some negative effects from an ecology, ecological and environmental impact to having these fences. Highway 69 has a few of them, and they're, they're noticing that there might be some, so I just tread lightly. There's also cost of maintenance. Safety is number one priority for me, I understand that. But putting up a moose fence doesn't necessarily mean the moose are going to stay in. And there's a few other things, so just be cautious and aware that this might not solve the issue and that there's other impacts to putting up a fence.
Yeah, I also, also have reservations about these, these types of things. I mean, I, I'm not sure how serious they are about this, because that's a huge project. I'm not sure that I want my tax dollars, because we are the taxpayers paying for these types of things. You know, I had to travel that highway in the dark most of the time, and you know what? It is what it is. So, I don't know. I, I, I just, it's always nice to just say rah rah and agree to these things, but, you know, we're also the taxpayer paying for these things. So I, I have strong reservations about supporting these, these types of things.
Councillor Kylie?
Well, I, I do support it because I said, just recently, in Inglehart in particular, there was a gentleman hit a moose and was killed. If we look at Southern Ontario coming up to, as far as North Bay, they have the luxury of this fence. I mean, I still agree it's taxpayers' dollars, but we shouldn't be short-changed either. If it saves one life, it's well worth it. So I do support it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Shamir.
Yeah, it's a bit funny that they ask us to, to bag this up, but they stop at the west end. What's wrong with the rest of the, the north? Because I know in the last three days, four residents of Kirkland Lake have hit four different cars with moose. It's, they're dangerous. One person yesterday afternoon, that's 11:30, well, morning, 11:30 hit a moose and they stayed right out, right out of their truck. And it happens all the time. I think, Todd, you're right. There seem to be more, though. I know there was always a problem, but there seem to be more, I know, because the, the hunt is lower. They say there's no moose, but I keep hearing people hitting moose. Going to the Y one night and coming back, I saw five. Now, there's supposed to be about five in the whole region, so I don't know what those five were all going together, but it's a straight, it's, there's something going on there, Tony.
It's a, like, I, I think to support the resolution, as councillor Morgan said, I mean, it may never happen. A lot of times we support these resolutions as, as, yeah, we agree there should be better safety. But, I mean, not to include Highway 66 would be, would be, you know, if we're going to support anything, this Highway 66 has to be included in this, in this resolution. And so I, I would support it, just in, but only if we, only if we include Highway 66.
Don't they stop at the west end?
Well, Highway 11.
Up to the Timiskaminge.
Yeah. So I'm, there, there's another Highway 66 and 112. I mean, if we're looking after our own area, then we have to include these two highways as well. And I would be willing to support it in that. Councillor Barker.
I see this more as a Band-Aid issue to the, a bigger provincial issue, and that is proper management of our, our ministerial, our, our assets. And natural resources has been cut and cut and cut, and now we're dealing with bears in our, our town proper, more moose on the highways. I think we need to really look at, do we invest our money in putting up fences, or doing proper studies, and having proper plans in place for wildlife management? And, and that's where I think we need to really look at this. Before I vote on this, I'd like to see both sides, both arguments, and be able to go with the, the best picture. But it's a big investment. There's maintenance costs associated with putting up the fence. I've done commercial fencing. It's expensive, it's time-consuming, it impacts the environment. I think there's just a lot before I can support this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Morgan?
Yeah, I, I agree with, with councillor Barker. You know, from a, my own perspective, I would much rather see somebody do a cost-benefit analysis of installing night vision in every car that's sold in Northern Ontario versus building a fence worth billions of dollars, you know, from, from, you know, to cover every single highway. The reality is, is that the moose you hit is the one you don't see. The one standing in the middle of the road is the one you stop for. It's the one hiding in the ditch, or whatever, that runs out in front of you. So, I mean, I think there's other scenarios that are better solutions here, and I agree that, you know, wildlife management is brutal. You know, you've had to listen to me, you know, yap about the bears, you know, forever, and, and it, you know, here we go again. And, and actually, bears are what I've been seeing the last few years on the highways. But, you know, speaking to what you said, Tony, about which highways, I mean, the last bear I saw was just south of the North Y on, on 112. Almost every time I go to Timmins, I see a moose. That's not covered by this resolution. So where do we stop? I think it needs to be a passive solution, and I know myself, you know, I seriously considered buying a vehicle with night vision specifically for that reason. Instead, I bought the biggest vehicle I could buy in hopes that, you know, if I did hit a moose, it wasn't going to kill me. But, you know, those are the options that we have out there, and I think we, a little more thought needs to go into this.
Yeah, it's, you know, our community has never been one to pass all, to support many resolutions from other communities. And a lot of them, you know, it's no different than pa, fore-laning Highway 11, right? We'll all be long gone by the time any of this comes up, but does that mean we shouldn't support, shouldn't support it in general? I, I don't know, but councillor Roman.
I, I don't see that this type of resolution resulting in fencing all along Highway 11. But what I think it does, though, is, is it just brings it to the attention of Queen's Park, but it's an issue. And, and I think that the more support this type of thing gets, the better. So for, for that reason, I'd be prepared to support it. I'm not expecting to see moose fencing all along Highway 11 as a result of this, but I'm in favour of supporting one of our neighboring communities.
Yeah, because really what we're doing is we're dealing with the, with the effects or the results of the true cause of the problem, and, you know, it's, it's always been like that here. Especially now when the moose are coming out because of the bugs. It tends to drive the moose out of the bush, but, I mean, not to support it doesn't help either, right? Councillor Morgan?
Okay, well, why don't we do our own resolution that talks about the problem? And ask the province to do a cost-benefit on the different solutions, because this, I, I just see us agreeing that, you know, this kind of thing is the right answer, and I don't agree with that. But I do agree that, you know, there's a problem, and I'd like to see a solution to it.
Like, perhaps we're better off not entertaining anybody else's resolutions, but I, I don't, I don't know. Councillor Kylie?
The resolution came up at the Timiskaminge Municipal Association, because I think Latchford in particular and Timiskaminge Shores have had more issues with, at least it was a big concern of theirs at the, at the meeting that it was at. I think when we, we start talking about the Department of Highways and then M and R, we're, M and R is not involved in the Department of Highways as far as putting up the fences. Or it's, it's a Department of Highways issue. It's all provincial, but, I mean, if we wait for the province to fore-lane all the way to Timmins, it's, we'll all be out at the graveyard. So it, it, it might be a temporary solution at some ex, to some extent, but I think it, it will save lives. That's my opinion.
Certainly it'll save lives. I mean, we couldn't even get the Department of Highways to put a, a bike lane. I mean, the, the province is, is spending millions and millions and millions of dollars on advertising to keep people active in Ontario. And they won't put a, a bike lane from, for Highway 112, I mean, which would cost them, you know, nothing really in the whole picture. But anyways, we could go on forever with this. We do have a resolution. So I'm, I'm going to read the resolution as it was put forward, okay? And we can deny it or, or approve it. But I'm only going to read the bottom part of it. But, so, well, it begins with, whereas Highway 11 from North Bay to Timiskaminge Shores is annually invaded by wildlife, in particular moose and bear. Therefore, it beeth resolved that council of the corporation of the town of Kirkland Lake urge the province through the ministry of transportation to install wildlife fending, fences adjacent to the Highway 11 corridor from northern boundaries of city of North Bay to Timiskaminge Shores for safeguard both motorists and wildlife in the critical area of provincial highway. And further that this resolution be forwarded to municipalities within the district of Timiskaminge, Timiskaminge Municipal Association, Phenom, TMAG, and MPP, John Vantoff, for their support. And the Ontario Ministry of Transportation for action. All in favor? Okay, the resolution was voted against.
Okay, the next resolution that has come in, came in from the city of Mississauga. In fact, we received one not only from Mississauga, but from the city of Markham. They've been having problems with aggressive and misleading door-to-door salespeople. So what they're doing is they are petitioning the government of Ontario to please take a look at banning door-to-door sales. There's nothing, what it seemed when I was talking to the, the people down there is that they can't ban themselves. It has to be regulated by the province. We can regulate them, which is what we've done with our door-to-door sales, Hawker peddler bylaw, but they really need to be banned. And it seems that there was, in Mississauga, there were 142 breaches of the Consumer Protection Act. And there were people that were being, elderly people who were being misled and just taken advantage of. So they've asked us, or they've sent out to all the municipalities, to please join with them in their petition to the province of Ontario to ban door-to-door salespeople.
Again, here we have a resolution from Mississauga. I don't really care what happens and what's going on down there, but I am very much concerned in what is happening in Kirkland Lake. And what is happening with, with door-to-door people affecting the citizens of our community. And this is the information I think that we, we need to know before we can make a, a decision. But what I am told is that we do have our bylaw, Wayne McGinnis. And Wayne is going to give us some factual history of what our residents are facing with door-to-door salesmen. Wayne, if you'd like to come forward and please speak into the mic that has a blue light, or a green light shining in front of you.
It's on.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for having me. This is a, a bylaw that's always seemed to fall into my lap over the last 23 years. And as councillor Morgan has known, I have, I've even addressed them at his house at one point. But since 1996, the very first incident that I had was an elderly lady in Swastika that purchased a vacuum for $2,000 back in 1996. That was my very first taste of the Hawker and Peddler bylaw. Now, I caught that person, charged them, and, and they were given the, the fine, and I got the lady back her money. But from that point on, I wondered, how are these people targeted? How do they target these elderly people? But also, before I go there, I said to the woman, why did you purchase a vacuum for $2,000? And her answer was, I just wanted him to get out of my house. And that's the point with the high-pressure tactics. They target elderly people, and they're, they're younger, much younger people that are doing this, and they know how to put the pressure on them just to make the sale. And that's all they care about, is making the sale and making a buck at the end of the day. When I spoke to Joanne earlier this week about this, these people, like, what we're dealing with here, about 96% of the people that are hawkers and peddlers, they don't come to your town and they don't register properly, which they're supposed to do. In doing so, if we regulated them, if we could stop every single one of them that came to town and had them register properly, you would find that most of them would have criminal records. In doing it for 23 years, the majority of them have criminal records. Some of them even are wanted. At one incident, we had people in town, one was wanted by Metro Toronto Police, the other one by Hamilton Wentworth. They were arrested, they were returned to those agencies. We really do need to, to bar these people. In my 23 years, I think we may have had four or five people actually registered with the town properly. But every single time, it's, I, I get a complaint, and I go investigate. Usually they're staying in a local hotel, they have phone lines set up at these hotels. Like, again, I said, they target the elderly people. And they don't come knocking on my door, which I would love. It'd be so easy to catch them. But they seem to find elderly people. So I would just, I would really say that they really need to be banned. Today's day, you know, if, if you want to make a sale, you can do it on, on TV, you can do it over the internet. You don't really need to be going door-to-door. The people need to be protected as well. When, when they go to your door and you invite them in, you're inviting a stranger into your house. You have no idea who they are. You have no idea what their intentions are. And that's another reason that we want to ban these people, because, like I said earlier, the majority of them have criminal records, and we don't want to be inviting strangers into our houses to sell us things. our houses to sell us things.
Okay, a good story for 1990.
1996.
Is there anything any more recent?
Oh, yeah.
Can you bring it sort of into the 2000s?
Absolutely.
Just to see, make sure that it is happening.
Last year, we had a furnace company come to town, they were selling furnaces, they were staying at the Journeys End, they sold, they went to 15 different houses and sold, they made over $60,000 in profits. Many of those furnaces were not installed properly, so that's what happened when they weren't installed properly, they called other furnace repair companies in town to get help. One lady had a daycare in her house and she had no heat and it was in the fall. Charged them as well and also the technical safety standards were in town dealing with that as well, dealing with that complaint, so I worked hand-in-hand with them. So that's like last year, but we dealt with many, we dealt with a lot of vacuum salespeople, we dealt with cleaning products people. Lately, it's been these furnace people the last two years.
And we're certainly a good community to hit for water filters as well.
Yes, yeah.
You know, we're earmarked for that, right? I mean...
Yeah, we've even had, like you said, people come to town and say that we want to test your water and we'll come this morning and we'll, that's what, they'll take a sample of your water with a Petri dish and who knows what's going to react with it and they'll say, "Oh, your water's bad, you need this filter." And people believe them, they don't really need it, our water's fine, but we've dealt with that as well.
Okay, now, on the other side, have you dealt with the good side of having people come into our community and offer our residents something that maybe our local people don't offer?
Well, we've dealt with people like, for example, that dealt with reliance, like we all deal with reliance, most of our hot water tanks were reliance. Well, there was a company in town selling alarm systems and they registered with the town, all the people checked out and it was great, so yeah, that does happen, but we also, they're also dealing with, we have companies here that sell alarm systems like Kohat Electric, for example. So, I mean, it's competition for people in this town, but like I said, my experience over 23 years, they're not beneficial to the town.
Counsel Morgan.
I just, I wanted to mention about an elderly woman who did call me and she did have a door-to-door salesperson come to her home and she was actually assaulted in her home and this woman wanted in and she pushed her in and she fell down. The woman, the elderly woman, did push her out and slammed the door on her foot and the reason that she didn't call the police is because she thought that she was going to be charged with assault. And she was an elderly woman who was blind and was actually expecting her home care worker at the time, which is the only reason why she opened the door to this stranger.
Counsel Morgan.
Thanks, Derek. Thanks. My position is well-known on this. I, you know, wanted to ban all door-to-door salespeople back when we last dealt with this. I'm somewhat in favor of the Mississauga thing, except I simply don't think it goes far enough and Special Constable McGinnis basically just reinforced, you know, the reality is that it's just going to be some other product that these people are going to be trying to sell. Really, I think the only people that we want coming to our door are the neighborhood kids looking for a donation for minor hockey or broomball or whatever they happen to be collecting for this, this week. Quite frankly, I don't want any of these people coming to my mother's house, my mother-in-law's place, you know, anybody's, any of the senior citizens in this town because in particular, not that senior citizens are dumb or anything, it's just that they come from an era where somebody knocks on your door, you answer the door. If the phone rings, you answer the phone. So they're more, much more susceptible to getting, you know, the high-pressure sales tactics. I mean, if I see these clowns in my neighborhood, I don't even answer the door. So, you know, it doesn't bother me and like you said, they're not going to come to my house because I wouldn't answer the door anyways. But seniors will answer the door every single time and we really need to, I think there's one reputable business that still sells door-to-door in Kirkland Lake and, you know, it's unfortunate, but I'm sorry, this is an antiquated way of selling stuff and I don't want to see it anymore. And if it means, you know, supporting Mississauga with a few caveats or whatever, I'm, whatever we can do to stop this, this activity, I'm totally in favor of it.
Counsel Kylie.
Yes, I can appreciate the concerns that you brought forward. I guess the only one that I can think of that is legit would be somebody like a direct energy that are, I don't know if there's ever been any complaints or issues with that type of a service.
There has been, actually. Yes, I'm glad you brought that up. That was just a few years ago, we had an energy company from Toronto come to town and they were promising people that they would play, they would pay a flat rate, but if you actually looked at what your hydro bill was, your flat rate, your rates that go up and down would never reach that high flat rate, so they're actually in town selling at a higher rate than what our rates were. So that has happened in this town and I charged them as well. And that's another point I didn't bring up earlier. Of all the hawkers and peddlers, I've lead, I probably averaged about two or three charges a year and in 23 years, only one person's actually appeared in court, the rest are all found guilty in absentia. They don't even show up for court.
This doesn't ban religious groups from knocking on your door?
Whatever you're trying to sell, if you're trying to, I don't know what religious groups are trying to sell, but you can't sell God, that's for sure.
No, I was hoping it might work.
Like as a community, I believe we can't ban these, these door-to-door, but what we can do is we can regulate it. We could support this resolution, but we're not going to be immediately helping anyone in this community. But if we regulate it differently than we do now, I think now we charge $5,000 for the first time into town and then we charge $1,000 every other time they come. I mean, let's make it 25,000 and let's make it 10,000 every time they come. We don't have to ban them that way because I don't think they'll come to our community. So we can regulate any amount, can't we?
I had somebody call this week looking for a Hawker Peddler license and as soon as they found the fee, their comment was, "I guess they don't want us in their town." So the 5,000 fee is a high one.
Yeah, but we could, we could make it 20,000. It would be so easy, wouldn't it? We just vote 20,000. Then we don't have to worry about the resolution.
I think we're not here to discuss just what we have, I think what we have is good enough anyway. I think we're here to discuss if we should support this. I will support this because it has to go to the province first of all and that's probably the only way to go. We should try to ban this like Todd said and I think we've been in agreement on this for a long time. We couldn't do it ourselves, but now we, they might do it, if everybody in the province gets behind it, it will be done. And I think our thing is okay too.
Last year, we charged 5,000 for these, you were talking about the people that came in with the blind, with the elderly lady?
Who should they get a license?
Oh, wow.
That's the problem, they don't get licenses.
Yeah, well, that's our problem, isn't it?
It is, and that's why I would love to see that the, the fine be much higher than what it is, because the fine is between 1,000 or 2,000. And, I mean, when you come in town, you sell a bunch of furnaces and you're charging $10,000 a pop, you're making your money even just getting the fine. And a fine, if you have a driver's license, the fine affects you.
But, I mean, we're a small community, so people come in, they don't register, they just go ahead and do it.
That's exactly what's happened.
And they get away with it?
Sometimes they get away with it and sometimes they don't.
They do it everywhere, it's not just here. You say West Mac, really, they do it in Toronto, Mississauga.
Yeah, a little bigger, a little smaller.
And the fine is not defined by us, it's defined by the province, eh, Wayne?
The fine, you, you have, the town has the power to create bylaws and you have the power to make the fine higher. When I do the fine, it's under the fine under the bylaw, it goes in front of the justice piece and the justice piece will decide whether you'll give them the maximum fine or right now the maximum fine's only 2,000.
So we could change that, sure?
Could change it to five.
Did you change it to five?
I thought 5,000 was to get a permit.
It is to get a permit for the first year.
Yeah, but if they all get a permit, that's when they get fired.
It's still a fine. When I did talk to the courts, they told me that 5,000 was the maximum we could put in our bylaw.
And did we change that?
Yes, we did.
Okay, then, we're good.
Okay, so we're not going to solve this problem anyways, but we do have a resolution, whether we want to support it or not. And this resolution, I'll just read the, I'll just read the start and then the end. It was moved by Counsel Kylie and seconded by Counsel Barker, whereas the Province of Ontario implemented the Stronger Protection for Ontario Consumer Act in 2015 to address, among other things, aggressive and misleading door-to-door sales tactics. Therefore, it be resolved that council of the town of Kirkland Lake moves to support the cities in Markham and Mississauga in petitioning the Province of Ontario to ban all door-to-door salesmen in the home services sector, more specifically the sale or lease of HVAC equipment, water heaters, water filters, systems and other related home energy products and services by door-to-door salesmen. Issue an alert to Kirkland Lake residents to warn them about ongoing door-to-door sales activities and encourage residents to sign the online petition at change.org. Encourage other municipalities to join Kirkland Lake in calling for the province to act and that staff, and that staff be authorized and directed to do all things necessary to give effect to this resolution. All in favor? Okay, passed. Okay, Director of Economic Development.
We received a donation at the museum and the person is a history buff, is very cognizant of what the museum needs and what its mandate is. His preference is that it would go towards digitalization of our archives. It is a mandate and an operational requirement of the museum. I brought this memo forward because it would require a purchase that exceeds our limits under the capital, as a capital purchase, and so I'm suggesting that it be added to the capital budget for 2016, it's an in and out, there's no cost to the town.
Okay, any, I guess one real quick question is, once we get this machine, what's going to happen with it then? Do we, is, will there be a cost to the town at that point?
You do have to store the data that you do create. Right now, we're okay, we're able to do that. Depending how big that, say, the files are, we may have to look at other storage options that could be on the cloud. Obviously, the first thing we would do is just prioritize what it is that we're digitalizing so that we're not creating just a massive pile of electronic files.
So this is taking sort of a lot of the things that we have in our museum and putting it in...
In digital format, that's right. We have quite a few of the records et cetera that are pretty old and pretty ready to fall apart, so this would preserve them.
Yeah, it's certainly a nice gesture. I do have a resolution then. It was moved by Counsel Kylie and seconded by Counsel Barker, that council approves an addition of $50,000 to this 2016 capital budget for the purchase of digitalization equipment for the museum of Northern History. This amount is to be drawn from a donation. All in favor? Yeah, thank you. Okay, Mark, you had to come up and speak on residential spring fee, landfill tipping fees.
So this is just an update or a report on how the spring free tipping fee event went. It was well-used by the residents of Kirkland Lake again this year. We did see a lot of vehicles with smaller amounts, so people were taking advantage of it and more so than rather, less people with more garbage, so we did see a lot of vehicles out there. We did receive just over 2,500 cubic meters of waste was brought out to the landfill by private citizens, so it was well-used. There is a mistake on the chart, it doesn't indicate the full private fees for 2015, but they are just over 11,000, 1,100 cubic meters of waste. So having these events, spring and fall, people are using it and we're making it available, opening on weekends and extended hours has been helpful as well. So, any questions on the report? We had some costs associated with it with the TNR, we had to negotiate a fee for them to remain on-site as the contractor for additional hours and our tipping fee attendant for the additional hours, but minimal in the impact of having the debris in the town cleaned up.
It was brought up, I think during the discussions that, I think it was Counsel Roman that brought up that we should be checking license, driver's licenses and I can tell you that I went out there and I had to show my license, so it was taking place, which is, I think is very important. So, any other surplus lands?
So we've declared our, declared the old DVA 145 Government Road is surplus as well as 60, or we vested them, so now the point is to declare them surplus and offer them available for sale so that we can accept offers on them and bring, well, bring them to council for consideration on offers for sale of these properties.
Okay, just for clarification, 62nd, that's where the capital arms was that we tore down and, okay.
Yeah, that was the mosque last year and backfilled and leveled.
Okay, I have a resolution, it was moved by Counsel Barker and seconded by Counsel Kylie, that council declares as surplus lands and available for sale the following properties, 145 Government Road West and 62nd Street. All in favor? Thank you. Nettie Lake Roads Committee request.
So I received a letter from the Nettie Lake Roads Committee asking to be, to change the billing structure. They've had some issues over the past few years in collecting monies and road maintenance and when to schedule it and who has the authority to do it, so we, I've been working with them to try and make it as smooth as possible, but at this point, well, last year went, that summer maintenance, they would take care of themselves, if they needed us, they would call on us. So the fellow that was doing some of the grading last year doesn't want to do it again this year and it was kind of substandard, so it's easier for the town when we do our portion of the road to continue on. We can assess what materials are required on that road because you can't grade rock and they are deficient in their roadwork, so we can work with them to get that up to, not a, a better, a better level for them so that their, the residents on that road being doctors and whatnot are able to travel that road a little safer. It also would alleviate waiting for payment of fees until they collect, nobody in their, on their board really wants to collect anymore. We ran into that on Goodfish Road where they did have a committee, but the one resident out there that was taking care of collecting fees and whatnot wanted to stop doing that and nobody else stepped up and at that point, we decided that we would bill the residents of Goodfish individually for developed lots in that area. So it's, it's something I believe that could be done. It allows us at the roads department to schedule their maintenance in a timely manner when we're already out there rather than at their wish and it would get the same level of service as the municipal road, so summer and winter. We would bill twice a year, seasonal for it and move ahead that way.
Okay, Counsel Roman.
I'd be concerned with the fact that we're now assuming the responsibility for when maintenance needs to take place and I think we're putting ourselves at risk by doing that. I don't have any problem with the town forces being called out, but I think the decision on what work needs to be done and when should remain with, with the board and not with the town.
So in their letter, they did indicate that they're requesting that the work, the town work be done at the same time as we are out there with the, doing the other portion of the road, so we would do it at that request. We do similar to snow plowing, when we're out plowing, we do their section. If we're out grading our section, they're asking that we do it at the same time. If it's calcium, we're out there doing, their, our road's dusty, their road's dusty, be at the same time. And that can be made very clear. And that can be made very clear in agreement with them, that it's not so much up to us that we wouldn't go out there and do it without doing our portion, but at their, at the request of the same time of municipal services. It's, it's the same way we're doing it with Goodfish at this time.
And Goodfish is working, how is Goodfish working? Is that working out okay?
Yeah, it's working well. Depending on when we get out there and the heat and the dust and whatnot, but there's not an issue with snow plowing because of the timing we go out, so grading and calcium, when we get there, we do everything.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, I have a resolution. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that council approves the request for the Nettie Lake Roads Committee for the town to directly invoice the east-side Nettie Lake residents for road services provided by the town. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mark. Introduction and reading and consideration of bylaws. So bylaw 16-043, it was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that bylaw 16-043 being a law, bylaw to deem lots not to be registered at 42, 44, 46 Federal Street, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. It was moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that bylaw 16-044 being a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw 12-019 at 26 Hudson Bay Avenue from residential R2 to residential R4, be read a first, second, third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. It was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that bylaw 16-045 being a bylaw to name member to committees of council by adding Eugene Ivanov to the Kirkland Lake nonprofit housing, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. Notices of motion. Confirmation bylaw is moved by councillor Kylie and seconded by councillor Barker, that bylaw 16-046 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its regular meeting held June 7, 2016, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, adjournment, it was moved by councillor Barker and seconded by councillor Kylie, that council adjourns its regular meeting of June 7, 2016 to an in-camera meeting to discuss one personnel and two property issues. All in favor? Thank you. And councillor Roman, you're up in the hot seat. Thank you.